Adrianne Breitfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, July 21, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for July 21, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Thank you. Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And Assistant City Attorney Lehman.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn over you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law.
Our presentation this evening is Service Member Patriot Award.
Good evening. Corey Burbach, Assistant City Manager, and I am very excited to get to present this award to Marie Ware this evening on behalf of the Iowa Employer Support of the Guard Reserve, who couldn't be here. But they were at the Multicultural Family Center earlier this month to present the Patriot Award to Marie Ware, we have to get used to her new title, Acting Project and Facilities Manager for the City of Dubuque. If you're not familiar with ESGR, it's an office of the Department of Defense, which was created in 1972 to improve the relationship between reserve members and their employees. The award was recommended by one of our City of Dubuque employees, Jared Sharland, who is a member of the U.S. Coast Guard Reserve and also our full-time, permanent Project and Facilities Manager for our Parks and Recreation Department. So that title is part of Marie's service and why Jared wanted to recognize her. Jared is actually not in the office currently. He is serving our country, and so we were really lucky he was able to participate in the award presentation via FaceTime. And here's what he had to say about Marie. He indicated that in his position with the Coast Guard, he's responsible for ensuring all aspects of contract management and park development and, in his job with the city, forgive me, he is responsible for ensuring all aspects of contract management and park development, and their statuses are always updated. He is very busy in Dubuque. It requires a complex amount of tracking and compliance and making sure that projects don't fall behind, and so him being able to simply step out of his position is not really reality in Dubuque. So while he is currently deployed, even though she has been counting down the days to her retirement for quite some time, Marie didn't even blink to step in and absorb his duties while he has been out of the office. This is a huge lift, and it allows him to step away and serve his country and take care of all of the other things that are happening. So the Patriot Award is given to individuals, it also represents the organization, obviously, but it is given specifically to individuals who are supporting our service members and our guard members so that they can make that balance happen between an existing full-time job and what they are called up to do. Marie, I'm hoping, will maybe say a little bit, because I know this award is very important to her, because her son also serves in the guard. In my time with the city, I will tell you that Marie is one of the folks who has taught us probably the most about work-life balance and supporting our employees, so I am very honored to get to provide the Patriot Award to Marie Ware this evening.
I was probably more eloquent when they gave this to me the first time, but I'll try and keep composed, because this is something that is really close to my heart, because I have a son, or we, my husband and I, who does serve in the Army National Guard. So I understand the commitment it takes from the individual, their family, their workplace particularly. Somebody has to do their work. It doesn't, you know, it's hard to fill and be able to backfill when someone's gone, and it takes a tremendous amount of support, but it's so very important because these are the people who keep us safe in our country. These are the people that make sure what needs to happen happens, and they don't do this full-time. They actually work a job like you and I. They take their time once a month to go away. They'll take a couple weeks because they have their, there's alphabet soup of what they call it, but anyway, they take their two weeks in order to be able to serve, and then sometimes they get called. And particularly with Jared's position, when he gets called, his specific position is they can give him 24 hours' notice, and he has to report somewhere. Luckily, he had a little bit more time, but not much, and that means they leave everything behind, and we're here to be able to make sure it continues so that they can do the service to our country and to each one of us for all of the things that we treasure so much about our freedoms within this great country that we live in. So it's my honor to be able to do that for him. When, he said he got called up for the second time, so in two years, this is his second time to go back again. The other part that I have to give credit to is Steve, because Steve and I, the last time, kind of shared the responsibilities, and with me leaving my position, it's like there's no, we both said after the last time, "We can't do this again." So thus, that's the only choice, is to be able to come and do this. But it's because they're sacrificing that we need to do the same here. So this is a great honor to even be nominated, but also it's a great honor to serve our country in this way and help those service members that do what they do, whether it's our son, or whether it's Jared, or there's other members that are here in our city that do the same thing in other departments, other people are covering. And I do have to give kudos to the city, because the policies we have are very much very helpful to our service members. The leave that we give them, the things that we do, the City of Dubuque as a governmental entity is very friendly to our service members, and that is a thanks to all of you. So, thank you very much, and that's what I have to say.
I don't know, Marie, that was, that was pretty eloquent. That was, thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, I know. It's, it's very personal, we can tell, and we appreciate that. Well, I, there's just two things come to mind in this award. One is, I couldn't think of a more deserving person in the role that you have and the sacrifice that you're making to press pause on your own personal retirement journey to be able to fill in this role, so thank you for doing that. But it's also a great opportunity to do what you just did and lift up the service that people are providing to us right now in service to our country, one of whom is your family member, and we sincerely appreciate that, and I think it's a great opportunity to be able to talk about that here, which we don't get to do very often. So thank you very much for, for being here and saying those words tonight and sharing this with us. So, thanks, Marie.
We'll move on to Proclamations. Our proclamation this evening is Community of Colleges Week.
All right. We have several representatives here, but Nick, I know you're introducing, so if you can come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a great honor. I'm Nick Hockenberry, I'm with Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, and I am here introducing our Community of Colleges proclamation here tonight, and it will be celebrated, if acted upon and read out, on July 28th to August 1st. And this moment marks the beginning of our offices and many of our community partners' 2025-2026 college student engagement efforts. Those efforts are a renewed commitment to the students who come to the Greater Dubuque region, those just arriving, those returning, those from the Midwest, those from all over the globe. It's important for us to remember that these students don't just fill our classrooms, they fill jobs, they fill their time with volunteer opportunities, they are our neighbors in the community while they spend their time here, and it's our job to encourage them to see the opportunity here for the future. Our colleges and universities themselves are also not just community amenities. These are the economic drivers, the community anchors, the engines of innovation and leadership that we are lucky to have here in this region. And their students are exactly the talent, the future leaders, that communities are competing for on a daily basis. And our office and our community partners here in the city as well recognize their value and work to show them the opportunity that we have here. So we're deeply grateful to the City of Dubuque, not just for saying students matter, but also for showing it. Efforts like extending jewel transit service to college students that are here within the city, at institutions here within the city, and supporting events and efforts that do true engagement and create belonging with this population and our community. So this proclamation affirms that commitment and amplifies a message we're proud to share to every student who chooses the Dubuque region, and that is, "You can be great here." So thank you to the Mayor and Council and the many higher ed representatives that we have here tonight.
Well, thank you very much, Nick. Could the higher education representatives just please stand so we can, we can recognize you too? Yeah, thank you very much. You know, I'm, I'm very thankful that we're putting this proclamation forward and getting this opportunity to, to say a few things. One is welcome to students and families who are coming back to Dubuque or are coming here for the first time. It is important that they're here, and we really do appreciate their presence here, but also to say thank you to each of you and the institutions that you represent. You know, I, I think we've, for a long time, all lived together, and we've had some level of partnership, but I'm starting to see more of a recognition of how important our collaboration is, just as a community and as a region. And I just want you to know that we on this City Council absolutely recognize that, and the City of Dubuque recognizes it, and we want to do all we can to help to, to work with you and make students' lives so much better while they're here, and then, you know, obviously try to keep them here for a little bit longer after college, if we're able to do that. So thank you for the service that you provide to our community and the work that you do. I know you're at the tail end of a little bit of a quiet period that is now going to start ramping up, so I hope that you have a great fall as the school year begins. But thanks for being here to hear the reading of this proclamation, which I will keep with me at the, at the end of this, at the end of this reading. City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas the residents of the City of Dubuque and the Greater Dubuque region recognize the vital role that our colleges and universities play as cornerstones of economic prosperity, cultural vitality, and community advancement. And whereas Capri College, Clark University, Divine Word College, Mayas University, Loris College, Northeast Iowa Community College, Southwest Wisconsin Technical College, the University of Dubuque, the University of Wisconsin-Plattville, and Werkeburg Theological Seminary represent a diverse and respected network of higher education institutions that serve students from around the region, the nation, and the world. And whereas Dubuque's higher education sector is a key economic driver, educating tomorrow's workforce, employing hundreds of professionals, attracting visitors, and fostering innovation and civic engagement across the tri-state area. And whereas the students who choose to live and learn in Dubuque, in the Dubuque region, enrich our neighborhoods, strengthen our talent pipeline, and help shape the future of our community. And whereas, the City of Dubuque expresses its deep appreciation for the contributions of the students, faculty, and staff at each institution, and affirms its commitment to fostering an inclusive, welcoming, and opportunity-rich environment for all. And whereas Dubuque College Visit Week, July 28th through August 1st, brings prospective students and families to our city, showcasing the high-quality educational opportunities and exceptional quality of life our region offers. And whereas this week also serves as a time to celebrate and promote the collective strength and value of the Greater Dubuque region's higher education community. Now therefore I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council's staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of July 28th to August 1st, 2025, as Community of Colleges Week in the City of Dubuque, Iowa. All right. Thank you, everyone. Sorry, Mr. Jones, I started clapping.
Can I suggest that all the representatives, the institutions come up front?
Same suggestion that Nick just made, so yeah, let's do it. I'll hand this to you, Nick, you can hold it. For the picture, just kind of standing. Yeah, come on in, yeah. It's fine, you're fine doing it, it's nice to see you.
You can climb on the furniture if you need to.
Hey, one, two, three, smile. Smile again for me. And one last one.
All right, thanks, everybody. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here.
All right, on to more fun, Adrian.
Next are consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages two through three of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here, anything virtually?
Yep.
All right. All right, back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I would receive and file all the consent items and deal with as recommended.
Second by Farber.
You got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
The seven zero.
Next are items set for public hearing. We have four. First is Auburn Custard Utility and Roadway Reconstruction Project. Initiate public bidding process and setting date for a public hearing for August 4th, 2025. Second is setting a public hearing on the proposed lease agreement between the City of Dubuque and the Lamar Companies for August 4th, 2025. Third is North Schmidt Island Collection System, Contract Number One, Contracting Services for August 4th, 2025. And fourth is setting public hearing for a proposed development agreement between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Greater Dubuque Impact Investment Fund for September 2nd, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell, I think you were going to make the initial motion for number one, I believe, and then after you do that, we can have Ms. Farber staying, because I know that's what we're working on here.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion on item one only. I would like to receive and file, adopt the resolution, and set the public hearing for August 4th.
All right, we got a motion by Rousell, second by Mr. Jones, Ms. Farber.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I am going to recuse my vote from this and from the August 4th hearing, as well as I am a property owner on Auburn Street, and therefore that would be a conflict of interest for me to vote. So I will recuse my vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Farber. Okay, so Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
That motion passes six zero.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, six with one abstention, I should say, to be really clear. Yes, Ms. Rousell.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make motion for items two, three, and four, to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next are boards and commissions. We have applicant review and appointments for the Transit Advisory Board.
All right, so we have a review for a Transit Advisory Board position, one three-year term through July 30th, 2027, and one applicant, Katie Bailey. Do we have anyone here to speak to that application this evening? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
It does look like Katie Bailey is on virtually.
All right. Katie, we, we're here for you if you, if you'd like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Bailey, and I'd like to affirm my attention to join the Dubuque Transit Advisory Board. I am a proud alum of Loris College. I have worked at the University of Dubuque since 2019, so it feels particularly fitting that we were here to recognize the colleges earlier this evening. In my work at University of Dubuque, I also, I specifically support students that are first-generation, low-income, and living with disabilities, and it's my intention to represent those students and their needs and their interests with my involvement on the Transit Advisory Board. I'd like to, I love this community, and I'd love to continue to make pathways towards being engaged and connected and employed here in this area, more accessible for all, especially our college students, so that concludes my remarks.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Katie, for your remarks. Okay. We will move on then to the boards and commission appointment for the Transit Advisory Board. So this is one three-year term through July 30th, 2028. Here we have one applicant, Alex Cruzy, so I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we appoint Alex Cruzy to the Transit Board.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Sprank and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero, so Alex Cruzy is appointed to the Transit Advisory Board through 2028.
We'll move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is Request Rezone 2167 Jackson Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirements that are proposed orders be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings, prior to the meeting in which it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Sprank. Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Wally, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's great to see you guys. It's been a while. You got, you got to experience Sheena Moon, she's an awesome associate planner, our last public hearing cases before her, so she did a great job. So, the request before you tonight is to rezone the property located at 2167 Jackson Street from R2A, Alternative Family Residential, to C4 Downtown Commercial. The applicant, Michelle McAlachus, has proposed this change to allow operation of a detoxification facility, which is classified under our zoning code as a medical office clinic, which is a permitted use in our C4 district. The property is about 5,322 square foot corner lot located at East 22nd and Jackson Street, in close proximity to her other facility that's located across 22nd Street. It's situated in a mixed-use area with both commercial and residential zoning in Chase and Parcels. However, this would be an extension of the existing C4 zoning, which is located to the north and west of the property. Michelle McAlachus addressed the Zoning Advisory Commission, knowing that there's a lack of detoxification services in Dubuque and the need to travel to Cedar Rapids for such care. She held a neighborhood meeting and guarded the proposal, although no residents attended the meeting. The property is adequately served by existing utilities and public infrastructure. The small size of the lot limits a high-impact development, and any future redevelopment would be subject to a full site plan review by the Development Review Team. The area is designated as mixed-use on the future land use map, and the traffic impacts are expected to be minimal, given the site's scale and proposed use. After reviewing the request and hearing public testimony, the Zoning Advisory Commission voted unanimously 5-0 to recommend approval of the rezoning. A simple majority vote by city councils required for approval, and that's all I have. Unless you guys have any questions.
All right, thank you, Wally. We're in a public hearing to consider city council approve a request from Michelle McAlachus to rezone 2167 Jackson Street from R2A, Alternative Family Residential, to the C4 Downtown Commercial Zoning District. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this? Yeah, please, come on up. And just name an address for the record, please.
My name is Michelle McAlachus. My address is 2541 Broadway, and I desire to rezone this property, put in a detoxification facility. Dubuque needs one. And I love the idea that it's down in that neighborhood. It'll be a 3.5 ASAM, which is ambulatory, which means that we won't be doing IVs, any difficulty, but about 90% of the people that need a detoxification facility, that's the zone they fall in, okay? If you notice, right behind us, a tobacco, vape, liquor, whatever, they sell everything from kratom, which is a hallucogenic, to fake urine, so that people can, when they do urinalysis, they can beat it. They're a bad influence in the neighborhood, and I feel like we have to do something to save our neighborhoods. Most of the people that go to detox go out of town, but what happens is they chronically cycle through the hospitals, because many of them don't want to go out of town. They want to stay in their city. If we had something in our city, especially in that neighborhood, that would lend itself very well to helping people. You say a house, but you know what? They do it all over the country. And we'd probably have an eight-bed facility. I think we'd get slammed, to be honest with you, as far as parking with the C4 downtown. It's zero parking, as far as what, what is needed there, what is required, should I say? But right across the street, we have a whole line of parking at Liberty Recovery Community. If there's not there, we can, we can etch out a good five space behind that house, and we've got a whole 10 line, 10 across the street, so parking's not going to be a problem. We need to rehab it, we need to do a lot of things, but this is my request. I think it's a great idea for that neighborhood. Is it kind of novel and unique and like out of the box and like, wow? But it really goes perfectly with our project. So I'm asking that you vote for me, our project, today to help save our neighborhood, because it's not getting any better. So I thank you for your time. Any questions? Be glad to field them.
All right. Well, thank you, Michelle, for your comments. Yeah, we'll see, if we have questions, we might call you back up. Here, thank you. Any other public input this evening? Anything virtually?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, back to the table then for discussion. Mr. Sprank.
When I heard about this coming up on our packet here, I was full in support of this. It's, it is unique to the neighborhood, but I know Michelle has taken wonderful care of the property that she already has with Liberty Recovery Place. They built a beautiful apartment, beautiful apartments next to it. I know she takes care of all of her property and keeps well, great track of all the tenants, so I'm, I have no concerns with this coming to my neighborhood, so I'm going to be in full support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Ms. Wethel.
No one can doubt your passion. Your facility that you have is such a unique space, and look at what you have done and the good that you have brought to Dubuque with it, and so I am excited for you to have this space, and I am excited for the people that it will help. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
This would be a great addition to any neighborhoods. Congratulations, and thank you again. You're, you're saving lives, and much appreciated.
Ms. Rousell.
I think it's important to note that, that we, that a neighborhood meeting was offered and that no one attended, which normally indicates that they're not concerned about having this added to their neighborhood. It's already C4 all around, and it's in close proximity to the other property, and it makes no one attended, which normally indicates that they're not concerned about having this added to their neighborhood. It's already C4 all around, and it's in close proximity to the other property, and it makes good sense.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Mr. Resnick, do you have any questions or discussion?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, the detox station is open 24 hours, correct? It's 24/7, and the rezoning accommodates this, right? And I would like, if you would, Mr. Wurman, talk about any special challenges that 24-hour, 24/7 might pose for the neighborhood? Thank you.
Yes, so the current zoning is C4 Downtown Commercial, and a 24-hour facility is permitted. We do not regulate hours of operation. The only time we ever get involved with hours of operation is when it's tied to a conditional use permit, or if it's like an automobile noise-inducing type business with regards to that. So when you typically think of medical office clinics, you think of hospitals and other facilities, they operate 24/7. With regards to this, the size and the capacity of the structure, and also the proximity to the existing commercial, and directly behind it, like you mentioned, there's a retail, sales, and service operation. Staff doesn't perceive any issues with the 24-hour operation at this location.
Thank you very much. I, like my council colleagues, think this is a perfect fit, and I appreciate this going on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Michelle, I have one question for you, if you wouldn't mind coming back up just real quick. I'll say as you're walking that I totally agree and plan to vote for this, and I'm looking forward to it being a part of the neighborhood and a part of your organization that you've been working really hard for. But my question is just, is it going to stay the same? There's a house there now. Is this the same, or are we talking about a new type of facility?
I'm not building on to that, no.
Okay.
Probably the most I'll do to the site is edge out more parking spots.
Gotcha.
I'd like to have an ADA spot shooting right up the back door, and it's ADA, so that when someone comes in and needs that ADA compliance, we have that. You know, maybe a place that policemen or whoever would pull up, will get those, you know? So, no, I don't, at this point, I don't see expanding the site. I see rehabbing it. We need to rehab it. There's things that need to be done. We've done a lot of work on it already, but there's more that needs to be done to really make it the way we want it.
Got you. That's very helpful. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yeah. And thank you very much for your work on this and continuing to do all the things you're doing for that neighborhood and for the entire community, really. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. So Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
That motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number two is request to rezone property at Bluff Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings, part of the meeting at which it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Wally, please.
Yes. Good evening. The request is rezone an approximately .34 acre city-owned parcel located on Bluff Street with parcel ID number 1025401021. This property is owned to R2, and the request is rezoned to OR. It's a long, skinny wooded lot that's located directly adjacent to the historic Franklin School apartments on Bluff Street. The applicant is proposing to purchase the property from the city to construct a 20-unit apartment building, which would mirror a smaller, similar building proposed on the adjacent OR zoning district. So on that site, the applicant is looking at purchasing this lot to build a two-story, 20-unit building, and they're building an exact replica or design of the building located on the opposite side of this, all the way on the other side of the Franklin School. And that is actually located in the Cathedral Historic District, that portion. This lot is not located in the Historic District. It did go through our Historic Preservation Commission. The Commission did review the design of the property to the north, and they're actually going to replicate that exact same design at this location, even though it's not located in the Cathedral Historic District. They're taking that into consideration as part of that review. During the Zoning Advisory Commission meeting, the applicants, Micah Spivey and Fred Cammamiller, spoke in support of the rezoning, staying their attention to create new housing options that support the city's infill and affordability goals. Staff shared elevation renderings of the proposed apartment and clarified the property is outside of the Cathedral Historic District. However, the staff note that the north building went through a full HPC design review and is consistent with the city's future land use map, which identifies the area as mixed use. This aligns with our comprehensive plan goals and encouraging infill and walkable multifamily development close to jobs and services. This rezoning would be an expansion of existing OR Office Residential zoning district. The site has existing city utilities to the site. The traffic was discussed. This did come through a conceptual plan review before our Development Review Team. When they do look at the amount of off-street parking requirements and the traffic flow, there is no concerns with regards to that based on the size and the scale of the facility. At the meeting, there were no public comments on the request, and the Zoning Advisory Commission had no objections and unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning by a vote of four to zero, and a simple majority vote is required for the approval on this request. This is also helping meet our requirement, or not requirement, but our goal to create more affordable housing in our community and get us closer to those number of units by 2030. The location is very walkable, especially when we're looking at the new medical college located down on Main Street. There is pedestrian walkways and paths that connect it to the downtown, so that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Wally. We're in a public hearing to consider a request from Freddie Cammamiller to rezone property at Bluff Street from R2, two-family residential to OR Office Residential. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item this evening? Seeing no one here, anything virtually?
Nope.
Okay. Back to us then for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
Wally, could I ask you a question about the parking? Will there be parking adjacent to the apartment buildings, or are they just going to be on the street, at Bluff Street?
So the parking, so the entire site is going to be purchased and known by Cammamiller and Spivey. That includes the historic Franklin School facility and the other school facility to the north. About a year or two ago, we removed off-street parking requirements in the historic districts. However, that being said, the site has plenty of parking to accommodate both apartment complexes. There are some existing detached garages that are located behind the historic school, and then as you get further into the property, which is really kind of screened from the existing buildings and associated with it, there's space to provide the required amount of off-street parking spaces. If there is not enough on-site, where would they park? You know, it would be available on-street parking throughout the area. However, due to the layout and the nature of the area, there's off-street parking available on-site, so.
So if I recall, there's actually parking behind the Franklin School building.
There is.
Yeah.
And you just don't see it, right? Because you drive down Bluff Street, for one thing, it's a one-way. You're not swinging your head around. The houses on Emmett Street, kind of back up to the property, and they sit up higher. So there's a large, very large former playground area where the students used to play, and then there was a big off-street parking lot in the back that all the faculty and staff used to park at, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Well, motion here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number three is request to rezone 4178 Peru Road.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings, part of the meeting at which it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Wally, busy guy tonight.
That's right, tonight, all right. The item before you is request to rezone a portion of a property at 4178 Peru Road from Ag Agricultural to R1 Single Family Residential. The applicant is Dan Miller of the Miller Family Property LLC. Is requesting rezoning to allow the existing single-family home and the lane to be designated on a separate lot from the agricultural land. Mr. Miller explained that this action is part of a family estate settlement, and his brother plans to remain in the home while the remainder of the farmland will be sold separately. The proposed rezoning affects approximately 1.85 acres of the site, and the entire site's 23 acres. The property includes an existing residence, an accessory structure, and is surrounded by residential subdivisions to the south and the west, and agricultural lands to the north and east. This request would represent an extension of the existing R1 zoning, and staff found it consistent with the surrounding land uses. The Ag zoning district does not allow a single-family home as a principal use, so the R1 designation is needed to allow the home to exist independently of the agricultural parcel. So what that really, that means is if you can have a single-family home, if it's part of the entire Ag operation, once it's separated from that, it's no longer accessory to the Ag use and has become a primary use. That's why we're going through this rezoning process. Following staff's presentation at the public hearing, there were no public comments or objections. The Zoning Advisory Commission found the request appropriate and reasonable, and by a vote of four to zero, recommends that the city council approve the rezoning. A simple majority vote by council is required for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Wally. We're in a public hearing to consider city council approve a request from Dan Miller, Miller Family Property LLC to rezone 4178 Peru Road from Ag Agricultural to R1 Single Family Residential zoning. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item?
My name's Dan Miller, 1013 Patricia Ann Drive. The reason we're doing this, my brother wants to buy the house. We have an offer to buy the farmland. This land's been in our property, in our family since 1947. There's, through buyouts and inheritance, there's nine people excluding spouses involved right now, and we're at the point where something's got to happen. So that's a reason for it.
All right. Well, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public input on this item? Seeing none here, anything virtually? All right. Back to us then for any discussion. Seeing none. All right. And thank you, Wally, for your explanation of this, and Dan, for your comments on this to help provide some more context. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number four is Unified Development Code Amendment for wall and freestanding signs.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file, and further move that a requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Wally, please.
Yes. The request before you is a text amendment to the Unified Development Code that seeks to update signage regulations for the C5 Central Business Zoning District. This proposal is being brought forward by the City of Dubuque in response to feedback that the current signage allowances are too limited for the downtown C5 business district. The goals of this amendment is to bring the C5 district standards more in line with those of other commercial and industrial zones in the city. Currently, the wall signage in a C5 district is kept at one sign per street frontage with a maximum area of 100 square feet, regardless of the size of the building. The proposed amendment would allow wall signage up to 10% of the building wall area or 100 square feet per business, whichever is greater. There would be no limit on the number of wall signs per frontage, so long as the total area remains within the permitted maximum. This aligns with sign allowances already used in districts such as the C3, Commercial Service, Commercial Recreation, Light Industrial, Heavy Industrial, and Modified Heavy Industrial districts. The second part of this amendment expands the allowable area for monument, or what we call freestanding signs, along Main Street. Currently, there are only, these monument signs are only permitted between 8th and 10th Street. This amendment would extend the range southwards from 10th Street to 4th Street, making monument signage consistent through the C5 corridor along Main. These changes reflect the character of the area and support the evolving needs of businesses without compromising the design standards for public or public safety. The Zoning Advisory Commission reviewed the proposed amendment at their July 2nd meeting. Staff presented the full details, and there were no public comments or concerns from the Commission. By unanimous vote of five to zero, the Commission recommended approval, and a simple majority vote is required to approve the text message, or text amendment, excuse me.
Thank you, Wally.
Text messages, one of my things.
We are in a public hearing to consider city council approve a request from the City of Dubuque to amend the Unified Development Code, C5 Central Business Zoning District requirements for wall and freestanding signs. Do we have any public input on this item? Seeing none here, anything virtually? No? Okay. Back to us then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Yes. You know, downtown isn't the same as everywhere else in Dubuque because of the historic preservation possibilities. Has this information, has this gone before in the Historic Preservation Committee at all, and do you think they might want to talk about this? These are pretty big signs that they're talking about, and I don't know how that fits into, you know, what is historically there, or maybe that's not even considered. Mr. Wurman, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, so this has not gone before the Historic Preservation Commission. The C5 district goes from 4th to 10th Street, mainly along the Main Street corridor with regards to it. Actually, going through the Unified Development Code review right now currently, which will be releasing the tech report next week publicly, and we will be giving a presentation to the city council with regards to that. A lot of the discussion centered around sign requirements and how the city of Dubuque is pretty restrictive in some of the requirements when we look at that. We've had certain requests, for instance, I'll give you an example of the Prudential Building, which is where the University of Dubuque's Medical College is going to be located. Currently, right now, the signage that would be allowed on that building would be a 32-square-foot wall-mounted sign, and that entire building wall space is over 1,000 square feet. And when you look at other facades in the C5 district, what we're looking at is trying to keep it proportionate to the building wall. Allowing it to be greater than 10% really gets into that sign, visual sign clutter and everything that's associated with it. And this gets involved with wall-mounted signage. Projecting signs, a little bit different on the building. It is kind of an industry standard when you look at other cities, when you look at the amount of wall-mounted signage. The other thing that we talked about, especially with the Unified Development Code update, and we're seeing with this, is the number of signs. So we used to regulate, oh, you're allowed one sign. Well, they might have one sign, and how we define a sign, it may actually be broken up into two signs, be classified as two signs, but really may read as one sign. It's really confusing, and it allows us to eliminate some of those interpretations and us to eliminate some of those interpretations and that discussion where, is that logo get counted with the text, or is it two separate signs? So just eliminate it to the maximum amount of square footage with the 10%, helps eliminate a lot of that confusion, and actually reduces the number of areas that would have to go to the zoning board adjustment. So by, with this text amendment, it actually frees it up. It keeps it in proportionate with the size and the scale of the existing buildings. And we did, we did talk about the maximum 100 square feet or 10% of the building wall area, because there are some buildings down there that are a little bit skinnier and a little bit taller. However, when we did the analysis, all of them basically would just have a 100-square-foot or a little bit larger, with the exception of like the Rocheck Building and the Prudential Building, and some of the other larger-scale buildings are located down there, so.
I see. Thank you very much. My other question about that, the wall signs flat against the wall, or you know, of course, you can take a wall sign and put it out towards the street, and those are all allowed, and then how do they count as far as being part of the 10%? Thank you.
So when you talk about a projecting sign where it's perpendicular to the building and projects off the face of the building, is what you're talking about?
Yes, please.
Okay, sure. Let me get that pulled up here, the code requirements. So.
My, my, what I'm thinking about, does that, how does that count towards that 10% if they can use those projecting signs?
So with the sign matrix for a projecting sign, they're only going to be allowed 25-square-foot sign, one per business, per street frontage. So they would be allowed the 10% wall space for the wall-mounted signage. However, for projecting signs, they'd be allowed, that's limited to one 25-square-foot per wall, so that would be in addition to the 10% wall space.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Sprank. Wally, I'm a visual person, so I'm trying to think. We did, I remember we did something similar like this on, for the voices, the DePaco sign, where that kind of stick projects out. Is that kind of, would that kind of fall under something like this?
Yeah, so interesting that you brought it up, because there's a lot of discussion about signage, especially with the Unified Development Code and the Millwork District. So the, the voices sign that's located on the corner, that, that's a projecting sign that's not classified as a wall-mounted sign. They were limited to 25-square-foot, but they went through a process in order to receive approval. And there's been a lot of conversations, specifically with signage, about having the opportunities to make it a little bit more flexible, especially when we're hearing from our business community members, but then also from individuals say, I can't find the location sometimes. But to allow the creativity that we have specifically, typically in a historic district, I'll give you an example, we don't allow internally illuminated plastic signs. And that was written, you know, in the 1980s when they had the plastic cabinet signs. Well, now they're getting a little bit more creative in some of the design aspects, especially when you see in the historic Millwork District where you have multiple pieces of metal that is basically cut out and acrylics being provided, and it's an internally glowing aspect of it, which signage is, is something that we've had a lot of requests for, and we're looking at doing a text amendment to allow that. And it has less of an impact of some of those plastic cabinet signage that's associated with it. So it's interesting. I know a lot of us don't want to be like Wisconsin Dells, or the Las Vegas Strip is a big discussion that gets brought up. Some people liked us to see, to look like Wisconsin Dells and the Vegas Strip. That's the things that we get involved with. So as we move through the Unified Development Code and have these conversations about signage, it'll provide an opportunity to try to find that, that, that in-between, that area where we can be able to meet, especially when we look at certain entertainment districts or areas of our community. And just imagine downtown Dubuque, especially with the Medical College coming in and the number of faculty and staff. And one of the big focuses in my department is infill housing and getting more and more people living downtown to be able to increase those services, and hopefully in the future talk about a downtown master plan and some other things that'll be going through that. But creating that sense of feel and signage comes into that sometimes. I just visited my son in Portland, and then I went to Seattle, and you think of Kansas City. So there's some unique ways to be creative but not overbearing in certain areas. So that's a concern that we have with signage, and that's why we take it through this public process and be able to have those conversations, so.
Couple follow-up questions. I'm looking at the map, and it does include the five flags. Will they have to change their sign, that big, that marquee sign or anything like that?
So the marquee sign, that's an electronic message center sign, and they had to go through and get some approvals for variants in order for that to be that size and scale and operation on it, so.
Kind of to piggyback off of Mr. Resnick's question about illumination, it looks like they can't be flashing, but there can be internal lights.
Yeah, so internally illuminated, so you just, so imagine, okay, so it's a little deceiving sometimes. So goose neck lighting, uplighting of the sign is fine. When they talk about internally illuminated and concealed lighting source behind the sign, halo design, so if you think of signs that kind of protrude off maybe like a couple inches, and they have a backlight onto the wall, and it kind of glows, those are all be included. The exterior lighting sources is going to be like the bulbs on the outside. That's like a chase way that you see going around and flashing and certain things like that, so.
That's enough visuals. Thank you.
Any others? Okay. All my questions were answered in the process of you answering other questions, so I think we're good there. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Wally. Motion here is to receive and file. We have the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Roussel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
At motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Roussel.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Roussel, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Roussel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Public hearing number five is 2025 Maintenance Dredging Project Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Assistant City Engineer Bob Chissel is recommending city council approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $270,100 for the 2025 Maintenance Dredging Project. On September 5th, 2023, the city council authorized and staff submitted a boating infrastructure grant application to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for dredging the marina to provide transient boaters and boaters who operate vessels 26 feet or larger access to docking and safe harbor facilities, including fueling, pump-out, bathroom and shower facilities, access to clean water, electricity, and other utilities. In July 2024, the city received notice of award from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for the boating infrastructure Tier One Grant, and the city council authorized exec, execution of the grant agreement. On July 7th, 2025, the city council authorized the execution of a funding agreement between the city and Dubuque Marina for the partnership agreement for Dubuque Marina to provide the required local funding, $100,000, for the grant to perform maintenance dredging at Dubuque Marina. The dredging project will provide adequate depth and an improved open waterway for safely navigating transient vessels by dredging and creating the open waterway from the Piasta Channel to the marina transient docks. This will create improved water flow and water circulation, which will reduce the potential for future sediment siltation within the proposed dredge location. The proposed dredged open waterway will be more sustainable long-term and will maximize the return on investment of federal grant funding, the long-term solution in providing safe harbor access for daily and overnight transient boaters. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request, Mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approve the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2025 Maintenance Dredging Project through the adoption of the attached resolution. I don't believe we have any members of the public left for public input here. Anything virtually?
Nope.
No? Okay. That said, then, back to us for any discussion. Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Roussel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
At motion passes seven zero.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there's any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. I see still no members of the public for public input here. Anything virtually?
Nope.
All right. Then I think we can move on to action items, please.
Our action item this evening is quarterly update video on new housing development projects.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Roussel.
I move to receive and file and watch the video.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Roussel, second by Wethel. Felicia, you can roll the video, please. Felicia, I'm sure we're seeing a lot out there. We're starting to see some really good development pop up and all the work that's been done for making sure that we're increasing housing in Dubuque, so I'm very excited to see it. And, you know, one of the great things about this video too is to be able to see, and in the sheet that comes along with it, the, the regular update that we receive on a quarterly basis here. The, it's exciting to see different types of housing. So we, we aren't just seeing one thing happening. We're seeing multiple different things happening all over town. So it's, uh, it's great that we put these videos together and hope people get the opportunity to see it a little bit more often so they can know exactly what's being built out there. All right. No further discussion on that. Motion here is to receive and file, watch the video. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Roussel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Next are council member reports.
Happy to hear some reports this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Tuesday the 8th, we had a special meeting of Travel Dubuque Board to work on the employment contracts for our team. Wednesday the 9th, you did a good job of welcoming folks to the River Museum for ribbon cutting. I let you do the talking about that. One of the most exciting events I was at was Thursday the 10th, was the welcoming reception for Dr. Jean Rupert at the University of Dubuque, the dean of the new medical college. And I think they got the right person. I got to talk to her a little bit. I was very excited with the conversation. In fact, it naturally led to my background with the fire department, the paramedic service, and how could our paramedics help them make better physicians, and how could their physicians make, help us make better paramedics? And that conversation has leaked into the firehouses as well, so we're really excited about that. They're, they're talking about, among many other things, a high-fidelity simulation lab where the community can come and hone their medical skills, and that's, that's very, very exciting to me personally. Last weekend, I had hosted the class of 1970 from Dubuque Senior High School, which was the 100th graduating class and the largest ever. We were the last class before they split off into Hempstead and Senior. So we had about 100 and some people in town for that. The class was 723. We've got about 122 known dead from the class. Of course, 723 people with, without a staff to keep track of, I know we're missing some. We all gathered here last Monday to really make a, a huge difference in our community with the special council meeting where we corrected our whoops and had some very honest and open discussion and, and some, some heartfelt communication from citizens and to citizens from this council. I was real proud of that night despite the stumble that brought us there. Bunch of us were at the data center ribbon cutting. We had Travel Dubuque meeting the following Tuesday. Solid Waste Agency met last Wednesday, and a lot going on there. We're getting some, some roads in place to the new customer convenience center. And a bunch of us were also at the Greater Dubuque Development Annual Meeting, where the message was one of solidarity about, yeah, we don't all agree on everything, but we agree that Dubuque's a great place to be, and we need to agree on how we get there. And even if we're not liking this speed bump or that speed bump, we get over the speed bumps and we move ahead. And I was, I was real pleased with the message and with the turnout and with the, with the success, the phenomenal success of this entity that's really a fairly young entity as the world turns, probably 1979, 80-ish, 40th anniversary, so. Pretty impressive track record. So that's a little bit of what I've been up to, and it certainly wasn't just me. It was almost all of you at each of, most of these things.
Thanks, Mr. Jones.
So following along that line of thought, I also attended the reception for the new head of the DO program at the UD, and of course, I'm a very proud member of that Board of Trustees, and also attended their UD golf outing, which was full for a very robust and fun day, even though it was a touch hot. And then also kudos to the Mississippi Valley Tennis Organization because they had just an enormous amount of young, young players, youth players this year taking part in the tennis tournament. Last week, I was honored to attend the National League of Cities Summer Conference and proud to represent Dubuque as we talked about digital equity and cybersecurity, and also, of course, our data center. Got a few comments and, and lots of conversation and high energy about that. And then we also started our initial review of the legislative priorities for the National League of Cities to start our advocacy on Capitol Hill. So that will continue throughout the summer, and then we will finalize that document in November. And then I was also very pleased to speak with you, Mr. Mayor, at the data center ribbon cutting last week as well, and really look forward to the next steps and the expansion of that data center. So I appreciated the opportunity to do so. So thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick, go ahead.
Yeah, very quickly, I do want to invite the public to the Art on the River Opening Reception, which is a week from Friday, August 1st, but it's before our next meeting. So I do want to alert them. It's a, it's a wonderful place to bring your family, see all the wonderful sculptures, and have the artists right there to talk about them. And I hear there's going to be a good band there as well, and with some, some great hors d'oeuvres, and it's a, just a great place to be on a Friday afternoon. So that's, again, 5 to 7 o'clock on Friday, August 1st. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Resnick. Well, the only thing I'll add, just a couple things. You, you mentioned the data center, ADGDC Annual Meeting. Was able to attend both of those. But this morning, I welcomed DARE officers from across the state of Iowa, which is always an interesting, a great opportunity to be able to do that. This is actually, wasn't supposed to be in Dubuque for two years in a row, but it was. So they were here again this year, and they were here last year, so I got to welcome them last year as well, and thank them on our behalf for their, their public service. But in particular, they're very public-facing, public service and working with youth and families, so really appreciated being there. And speaking of youth, the only other thing I wanted to mention tonight is, you may recall that a couple of years ago, when, when I traveled to the United Nations Climate Conference, there was an announcement made by Bloomberg Philanthropies about a youth climate action fund, and we received some grant money for that. One of the groups that took advantage of that is a large group of Marshalese youth in Dubuque, and they created a Marshall, Marshalese Youth for Climate Action Group that met on Saturday, the bulk of Saturday afternoon, at the amphitheater in Eagle Point Park, and provided presentations led by five different students who were able to present on what climate action means to them, what it means to them here in Dubuque, what it also means to their islands and their ancestry. And it was a very, it was very informative and very moving. And it was also, it was great to be able to, they, they did some dancing, but then got me involved in the dancing. So it was, it was a really good time to be able to have some good community moments with a group of Marshalese youth that I think are going to become very strong leaders in, in Dubuque. And it was fun to be able to say to them that one of you might be the mayor someday, so keep doing what you're doing. That's a, you know, that's an interesting thing to be able to say, but it's great to be able to, to see a, a strong group of young people stepping up to talk about a very important message. So it was a fun day. All right. Oh, go ahead, Mike, yeah.
So I know this is city council reports, but
Oh, please, go ahead.
Since we're talking about upcoming events, and since I'm the coach, the Miracle League Battle of the All-Stars is Saturday, July 26th, from 8:00 to noon. And while I don't know exactly all the right times for the, for the games, the Police Department will be playing the All-Stars from Miracle League. The Fire Department will be playing the All-Stars from the Miracle League. And the team that I'll be coaching, which is the city council and the department managers from the City of Dubuque, will be playing the All-Stars from Miracle League sometime between 8:00 and noon at the Miracle League Field at Veterans Memorial Park.
Thanks a lot for mentioning that, Mike. It's gonna be a fun day. All right. Well, we have a closed session. Do a little bit more work here, so I'll entertain a motion, please.
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move the council going to closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss pending litigation and potential sale or purchase of real estate.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. For the record, the attorney the city council will consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session is Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Roussel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
At motion passes seven zero. We are in closed session.